At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 20, 2023, beginning at 6:40. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by our security. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we may remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Raich in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on our agenda are the public hearings. We will open our public hearing on the 2023-24 budget and proposed tax rate. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding the 2023 budget and proposed tax rate?
No, ma'am, we have no one registered for this.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker requests no later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding an agenda item? Did I already say that?
No, ma'am, we have no one registered for agenda items. We do have one for non-agenda items.
Thank you so much, Ms. Forsberg. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for assistant principal at Sam Houston High.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Mr. Choppa?
Thank you, President Fowler. At this time, I move to ratify the appointment of the administrative professional discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa, and we have a motion by Dr. -- Mr. Choppa and a second by Dr. Wertz. Please vote. What did I say?
You said Wertz.
I said Wertz. You know who you are, you doctors. Okay, now, please vote. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Wertz?
So I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal for Sam Houston High as Lexira Robles Perez. She's currently actually on vacation. But just a little bit about this individual. This person was a teacher, an English teacher, 9th through 11th grade English teacher in Puerto Rico, was a Spanish teacher at Irving ISD, was a special education teacher in Waukesha Haci ISD, and most recently, an assistant principal at the Young Men's Leadership Academy in Grand Prairie ISD. She has an education at La Universidad del Segredo Corazon in Puerto Rico, a bachelor's degree, and has a master's degree at Cambridge College in Boston. So we welcome her and are excited about her and her new assignment.
All right, we welcome her. We'll move on to action item A, consider approval of the 2023-2024 budget. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, Mrs. Moss will bring forward for the board's consideration the adoption of the 23-24 budget. Mrs. Moss?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz, President Fowler, trustees. Tonight, we will have a brief presentation. Most of the slides that you see in this deck are -- have already been shared out with the board. We have a couple of new slides sharing what the -- how the budget looks like for your adoption. But we'll just go through these slides really briefly and answer any questions that you may have. So we've shared out the timeline several times. Today, on June 20, we're asking for the board to adopt the budget tonight. Certified taxable values are due from TAD on July 25. The MCR will be calculated by TEA in August, and at that time, we'll know what our tax rate is, and the deadline to adopt that tax rate is September 30. So we've shared this out as well. Our budget priorities and all of these items are included in our budget. The safety and security competitive compensation, student recovery, intervention, and academic support are both in the general operating budget and ESER funding. Stabilization due to enrollment loss, we are using our ESER III funding for that. We've included fund -- our funding of AISD strategic plan year two strategies in there as well. And cost management, as we stated before, is an ongoing item for the district. These are our budget assumptions that we shared out at the June 8 meeting. Our average daily attendance, we are estimating 48,316, $42 billion in taxable values. .9335 is what we are estimating for the M and O, the INS, .2907, that's a penny drop in the INS fund, for a total tax rate of 1.2242, a decrease estimated of about eight cents. Our student enrollment that we're projecting is 55,593. The total staff in this budget is 9,098, with vacant positions of 1173. Again, that is the time that we pulled all of the information in through our snapshot for budget. Our basic allotment didn't change this year, 6,160 per student, and the golden penny yield did change, it's 1,2621. So just a few highlights of what's included in the budget, just as reminders. We did do a 4% general pay increase and targeted adjustment stipends totaling approximately $20 million. That is just for the general operating fund. We have other employees and staff members and other funds. The $6 million is what we're estimating recapture to be. We've talked about that and discussed that throughout the process. $5.5 million you'll see in general operating, that's for our universal pre-K initiative, year two. $33 million in our estimated vacancies, we talked about that in several of our reports as well. And then $30 million is what we are using out of our ESER III to supplement that general operating budget. And this is just an overview of the proposed budgets. Our general operating, again, we're looking at a $5.5 million deficit. The budget is actually balanced, but because of universal pre-K, we need to pull $5.5 million out of our fund balance. Our debt service fund, we're looking at a small surplus of $500,000. Capital projects fund, $379 million deficit. Again, that's because we received revenue in a different year, and our expenditure is coming up in a separate year as well. Our child nutrition fund, as we stated on June 8, we're looking at pulling $1 million out of fund balance there. There's a standard that the child nutrition fund balance has to meet, and they are over. So we're looking at pulling out $1 million and expending those funds. So this is a picture, I know it's difficult to see on the screen, but this is what we're asking the board to approve tonight. You're required to approve it at the functional level, and this page just details that. We're looking at a $1.2 billion budget total with all funds. And as I've reported out, try to keep the board appraised to how the budget looks without ESER funding. And column, the column on the far right tells you that if we did not have the ESER funding for the 24 budget that we're asking you to adopt tonight, we would have a $39.5 million And next, I just wanted to highlight two of our very important staff members, Ms. Bridget Lewis and Ms. Sheena Jocelyn. I think Ms. Jocelyn is here tonight. Thank you, Sheena. So these are -- So these ladies are part of a team, as well as the budget analyst, Angie Baza, Laura Rangel, a budget analyst, and Lonnie Castro, our budget clerk. They lead the work in our budget process. This work started for them in the fall of last year. It's a vicious cycle, I say. We're either working on one budget or looking forward to the next one, or closing out one, which we're about to do now. But I just wanted to appreciate these ladies, and of course, they're under the leadership of Ms. Carla Martin, who's back in the back as well. And they've done an outstanding job of getting this budget balanced this year. That has been our goal, and I appreciate them very much. It's not just the finance department, though. We reach out to other departments, academics, and, you know, they probably hate to see us coming. There are several meetings and processes that we go through to get to this result that we're at tonight. And so we appreciate all the staff that, you know, have worked to get this done. And with that said, Administration recommends approval of the 2023-24 budget, including the general operating fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and child nutrition funds as presented. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any trustees with questions? Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler. I don't really have questions more than comments. I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Moss, and Ms. Martin, the whole finance team. This has been a long goal of yours to get the budget to where we don't have this swing and have to explain what the swing is about and all of that, and you've done it this year. And I really appreciate that. I think it's more transparency for our citizens that are looking at these budgets, and just really appreciate the efforts that have gone into this. It's, I think, been one of the smoothest budget times of years since I've been on this board, and I do appreciate that very much. Also, with us as a board, I commend this board for leaning in again on what we need to do to take care of our district staff with the raises, with that percentage. It's not necessarily an easy thing, but it's what's deserved in today's competitive environment. It's what's necessary. So I appreciate all of you as my colleagues for having the fortitude to stick with it yet one more year at kind of maxing out what we can do. With that said, what I'll leave with is you have been very transparent as far as ESER. ESER is going away, and we have some tough roads ahead on what that budget's going to look like building for next year. Look very forward to what you and the team and the entire district comes up with so that we don't end up with a near $40 million deficit next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to the board and as well, Dr. Vassos. You know, I talk with him a lot about the importance of trying to balance this budget, and he was very supportive in that work, so I appreciate him. And I appreciate the board as well for your support and understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Moss, and I appreciate all the hard work you do, but I also appreciate how much you show your appreciation for your team. You never take credit for anything. You always give all the credit to the team, and I think that's very commendable. And I think that's very nice of you to do that and always include them and thank them for their work. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Thank you. They do the hard work, they do the heavy lifting. I ask the questions right, and they find the answers, so I appreciate them.
Very kind. Mr. Choppa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I don't really have much to add in way of commentary, except that I'm really glad that this budget not only is fiscally responsible, but it preserves so many of the priorities that we've laid out to be part of our strategic plan. We're securing universal pre-K, which, again, we were paying out of our own pocket for, but we know the dividends for that are so big. It preserves our ability to offer competitive compensation and hopefully still keep us in the top tier of paying districts in DFW area. It moves our, a lot of our hourly employees, we finally have a $15 an hour floor, and a lot of them will start, you know, a good bit above that. And so it's the work that you've done, the projections, yes, there's a lot of work we're going to have to do next year to maintain this, but so much progress while being so prudent with our funds. And I'm not great at math, but it's about, as I park it, it's about a 16 cent, you know, our total tax rate would be about 16 cents lower than it was for the 2021 school year. It's about a 12% drop, and so I think we're moving in the right direction, both programmatically and fiscally. So if there aren't any other discussions, I'd move to approve the 2023-2024 budget, including the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and child nutrition fund as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mr. Choppa and a second from Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you, Mrs. Moss.
Thank you.
Are we already at C? Are we at C? C, thank you. Action item B, we will now consider the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan Manual. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, we bring forward for the board's consideration the 23-24 Compensation Plan and Manual, and Mr. Cale is here to answer any questions.
Welcome, Mr. Cale.
Good evening, President Fowler, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Wertz. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. The compensation manual that is for your consideration and approval this evening is a compilation of a lot of different elements. It includes everything from our salary schedules to our stipends to processes and guidelines for pay effectively in all parts of compensation as it applies to our employees. It is a product of collaborative work every year with TASB, very much rooted in market-based data and trying to follow through on the objective of remaining market competitive in all of our positions. And we think we're in pretty good shape this year, very much appreciate the supports in terms of the support the board has given us to pay our people at a particularly competitive rate, and hopefully, the compensation manual outlines that clearly, not only for yourselves, but following its approval, transparency and availability to all of our employees through the internet, where they can look it up and understand what works on stipends, how it works, what works on base pay ranges and so forth.
And, Mr. Cale, I know a lot of work goes into that, a whole lot of work, and I know you're getting into the busy time right now with interviews and all of that, but we appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. Do I have a motion? Or should I ask, does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Will Banks?
Oh, yield to Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening, Mr. Cale.
Good evening.
One of the questions that I have had previously as a voter in our district and now sitting here once again, I'm seeing a number that confuses me, and I would just like to have a little bit of clarification.
Sure.
Because if I don't understand, I think there's got to be teachers and stakeholders at home that maybe also have the same question. When we look at our teacher librarian pay plan for 2023-2024, we notice that they are consistently getting and receiving well-deserved $500 increases year to year. However, when we go to year 22, and then we move to year 23, it then goes to $400 increases, and it continues with only $400 being given through 30-plus years. Why is there a $100 drop for teachers who have more, longer tenure in our district?
Thank you for the question. So a couple of points of clarification. That particular salary schedule is a minimum entry pay rate for that amount of experience. It is not necessarily directly linked to what increase someone is going to receive as a teacher. But there's still an explanation that I think is needed, and I'm happy to go through that. But I wanted to start with, that is a schedule for the purposes of hiring, of bringing people in the door. It's not necessarily a schedule pertaining to increases. To the extent that all of our salary scales, teachers included, have a market midpoint or a market average, and the district's practice for the last several years has been to give whatever increases approved by the board on that market average, the dollar amount of increase for teachers is consistent, and I think that number this year is 2,600 or real close to that. So even though those stair steps are a little different, and again, I'll be happy to try and explain why that is in just a moment, it doesn't change the actual raise that the teacher is receiving regardless of level of experience. It's going to be at the 4.4 or 4.1% this year. It's going to be right at $2,600. The reason that there's a differentiation between, I think you're right, I think it's between 22 and 23 years of experience, is that when that schedule is created in conjunction with TASB, it's modeled directly against market competitive pay. So they're looking at increments of experience with other districts to try and make sure that not only is our entry level pay competitive, but our corresponding pay as we go upstairs to steps and experience is also competitive. That isn't always exactly the same stair step, although it's often close. What they modeled this year for us, and you're right, it's been consistent to some degree in the past, is that there was a cut point at which an increase of $400 going forward in those advanced levels of experience remained market competitive comparatively to the level of market comparativeness of the lower levels of experience. So it was just a, it was taking that growth as it went up each stair step and saying, don't need to quite take the same size of step up at this level of experience to remain just as competitive as we are at experience years 1 through 21. So 1 through 21, $500 steps, got to year 22, they made the decision as they modeled it for us and said, at this stage, it doesn't require that, and it was stepped down to 400 so that it was consistently competitive at the same degree that it was at the lower levels of experience. Did that make sense, or did it sound like I was making a bunch of noise?
It absolutely made sense. I don't know if I personally agree with that.
Okay.
I don't think that is a good look to our teachers, but I understand, and I want to make sure we are competitive at all ranges.
Yep.
But I do think to our senior teachers, if you are looking at black and white paper, which they often do, that to them does not seem like a kind reward for the tenure and the work they put in. And that's something I think we need to keep in mind of. What is the appearance to our teachers?
And the one, I appreciate that. And the one thing I want to make very clear is our teachers who are here are not corresponding in their salaries to those particular rates. That's for new hires coming in the door, and it's a minimum schedule that we won't pay somebody any less than that coming in the door at that level of experience. So it should not impact their raise, and it doesn't necessarily correspond to what our folks with that level of experience are making today.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Cale. So, two things. One, perhaps an edit to consider would be maybe some type of asterix or statement in this manual so that current employees might not get confused that it's specific for new to the district. Maybe that'll lay a little bit of concern and confusion. So that, just a suggestion there. Overall, this is a home run. Thank you. This is, I know a lot of work went into this, and I know from your years and tenure here at Arlington ISD, what this does is alleviate a lot of questions that you have probably received, and I know that you have received.
Couple, yes, sir.
So our role at the governance level is to ensure that we've got the right conduit, the right connection with our public, and that it's, the district is meeting those expectations. One of those is absolutely transparency, and this is wonderful, such a great positive step forward in that. I think that'll help communications, morale, everything overall. So thank you for all the work that you've put into this. It's great to see this. It'll be great for people, including ourselves, to be able to refer to the website. You can go look here instead of lots of different questions that are mostly around the same type of subject matter.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Thank you very much.
Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just had a really brief comment, since we didn't talk about this last time, but we are, we are looking at the stipend handbook as well today. I wanted to bring attention to the fact that multiple extra-duty stipends have been adjusted.
They have.
And just a practice of our board, once every couple of years or so, we revisit our stipends with HR and compensation consultants from TASB. And not only have many of those stipends been adjusted to either meet or, in most cases, exceed what our similar school districts are paying around the state, but we also have made adjustments to many of our Arlington ISD-specific stipends.
Yes.
For example, we offer stipends for family engagement liaisons, model teachers, lead teachers, our sped specialized programs.
Yes.
And so I just appreciate the board and staff for making those adjustments, because it is not easy to commit to extra duty, and so those stipends are well-deserved, and I'm excited that we've made those adjustments. I'm also excited, Dr. Raich mentioned transparency. All of these exact stipend amounts for elementary ranging all the way up to high school will be published. It's all going to be in the PDF handbook that's uploaded soon to our district website.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you all. That's all.
If I could respond real quickly, I just want to point out two things that are really important to me personally. The two things I'm really pleased about with regard to the, not just the formatting and the availability and the transparency of the manual, but the content and with the support that's come from the board, and that is, we are going to be, we already were competitive. We are going to be extremely competitive, and that achieves two primary missions. It achieves treating people well, paying people fairly, paying people competitively. And then that has a direct consequence to frankly applicant flow and interest in our district. Pay is not everything, but it is very important. And to the extent that we're not only have the initiative to do the right thing and treat people well, but by being very close to the top of the market now in many of these elements, whether they be stipends or base pay, the candidate flow issue is just dramatic. Our substitute pay, for example, that we haven't even mentioned yet, with the support that we've had for what's going to be implemented, I'm particularly hopeful, not only, again, treating those people well, but the downstream effect it has on the ability to fill many more of those positions, because the candidate volume, without question, should increase as a result of this. So thank you for all the supports.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Mr. Cale. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I'm all for being as open and transparent as possible, and the benefit of which is having this on our website is simply going to reduce the number of calls. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm of the age now where my friends have kids that are coming to work in the district, and those parents are calling me going, what about this stipend? What about that stipend? Now I've got
this stipend? What about that stipend? Now, I've got a place to send them to. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate the work of this board, the work of the finance team, and I'm grateful that we're in the position that we have been in to give four, 4% raises over the last four years. But one of the areas I was really concerned with, because I've been hearing about stipends from those parents with kids coming into the district, I think we've really closed the gap on kind of that last remaining area that needed to be addressed. Of course, we started last year with substitute pay, and then now with all our auxiliary pay, have gone a long way to hopefully alleviating those chronic openings that we've had in those hard-to-fill hourly positions. So, again, I commend you and your staff. And with that, if there's no further questions, I move to approve the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan Manual as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks and a second from Ms. Haynes. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. H, we appreciate you. We now move to Action Item C, Consider a Resolution and a Temporary Construction Easement. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Our last action item for the board's consideration is a resolution and temporary construction easement.
Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Fowler. If there's no questions from trustees, I have a motion that I will read. It's full of the officials and legalese, so bear with me here. I move to approve the resolution and temporary construction easement necessary to construct public water main improvement serving Ausley Junior High School and the surrounding neighborhoods, being 1.166 acres or 50,783 square feet of land situated in the H.P. Moss survey abstract number 1085, City of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, being part of that certain called 25.377 acre tract of land described in a warranty deed of Arlington Independent School District as recorded in volume 9455, page 405 of the Deed Records of Tarrant County, Texas, DRTCT, and also being part of Lot I, H.P. Moss edition, in addition to the City of Arlington, as recorded in Cabinet A, Slide 2734 of the Platt Records of Tarrant County, Texas, PRTCT.
I'm sorry, Dr. Raish, I wasn't paying attention. Will you start over?
Sure, I can repeat all of that for you, no problem.
Just kidding. Thank you, Dr. Raish.
Need a second.
We have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. McMorrow. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now address the Consent Agenda Items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda with, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So, moved.
I have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second for Mr. Chapa? Please vote. Motion carries in the affirmative. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items? Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I would like to call Mr. Basil Brown. Welcome, Mr. Brown. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker's derogatory comments, and that an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up, and then you will please end your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I thought it was three, but I'll do two. I'm going to try to condense it. My name is Basil Brown. I'm the president and CEO of Scope Guard Incorporated. Scope Guard Incorporated is a DFW metropolex historically underutilized business that manufactures and sells only one product, our disposable stethoscope covered, fits over the diaphragm. There's one for the bell as well. We've worked extremely hard to bring this product from a drawing on a piece of paper to a, to an actual product that's in a box of 100. Our company is the only African-American company in Texas that has a license to sell a medical device. So, I mean, I, I think that speaks to what we've been working on. But I'm here today, from personal experience, I'm saying that African-American companies are having, not getting a fair opportunity to introduce our goods to the Arlington ISD. We can't reach anyone by phone, by email. They never return the calls. They never return the emails. And so, because of that, we're not able to get a face-to-face meeting with them to have a meaningful discussion about the product. On February 22nd, I personally appeared at the Arlington ISD Health Services Department. I spoke to Annette Minnerly. She's the director. She, I gave her the product. We talked about it. She said it was a, a need for the product in the district. She loved it, and the district would purchase the product. But after six weeks, I didn't hear from her. So, and then, no emails, no phone calls. So, I went back over there, and she was about to step in a meeting. So, she said she would get back with me, and the next day, she sent me an email, and it said, I'm quoting her, "I don't think I can give you a price that you will be able to meet." So, the $10 million question then becomes, my next question was, well, what is the price? And she never gave me a price. She never responded to that email to this day, so I don't know the price. And so, basically, it makes it impossible for me to. So, I'm just asking if you guys might could get involved and create a, where I can get a meaningful discussion with, with her.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I appreciate y'all for hearing me.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
All right.
It is now time for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some information about some exciting news that's happened since the superintendent's report at our last board meeting. Congratulations to Martin graduate Rebecca Lara. Rebecca continued. A great trend with our students. As for the, as for the third consecutive year, Martin has had a winner of the $40,000 Amazon Future Engineer Scholarship. The program helps underserved students advance their education in computer science and includes a paid summer internship at Amazon. Rebecca will use the scholarship money this fall when she starts her collegiate career at Rice University, where she, in addition to her major, will be studying computer science and a minor in business. And while I'm on the topic of congratulations, this one goes out to the district, as we've been named one of the best communities in music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. If this sounds familiar, it's because it is. Our districts receive this distinction 17 times now. To qualify for the best communities designation, the Arlington ISD answered detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making program. So, congratulations again to everyone in our district for making this honor happen once again. And if you're looking for something to do or a way to help, our annual Back to School Kickoff is slated to take place on Saturday, August 5th at 8:00 a.m. until noon at the AT&amp;T Stadium. This will be everyone's chance to get a backpack full of school supplies for the upcoming school year for your students. And we also need volunteers for this event, as it takes hundreds of people to make it successful. So, if you want to find out how to register and to volunteer, I invite you to go to our website at www.aisd.net/kickoff. And that concludes my first superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do we have any school trustees with reports? No, you can. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just very quickly wanted to thank our whole team, trustees, Dr. Wertz. We all were, between, between the two summer Leadership Institute conventions this summer, our team had 100% participation in that really important get-together with the school board trustees and superintendents and staff members from all across the state. I'm very grateful to serve on a team of eight where everyone is all in as far as our commitment to serving our students and our staff, and also committed to continuous growth in doing so, so that we can be our best as we serve. So, we made lots of memories. We bonded as a group, and we learned lots from our colleagues from across the state. Hopefully, in our two presentations, we also were able to offer some wisdom and inspiration as well. But I wanted to thank all of you. I had a lot of fun and learned lots at SLI. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do we have any other trustees? All right. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
At this time, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. All right. It is 7:21, and we are adjourned.